I don't really need to give an introduction to Mr. Krum. He's beyond a legend. And without further ado, I'm gonna hand it over to someone who's a better expert at taking us through his work. I like to call Mr. Gary Groth, the co-founder and publisher of Fantagraphics and the man behind the Comics Journal, to come onstage and start the presentation. Thank you so much for doing this for us.
Well, I don't want to waste any time. I just want to get Robert up here. There you were. The format's going to be very simple. I put together a presentation, a visual presentation. We're gonna be walking, talking our way through Robert's career, and then I think we'll probably open it up to questions. So, and since I don't want to waste anybody's time, I just want to introduce Robert and talk a little about his background, and then start talking, start asking him questions. Robert Krum was born in 1943 in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. His childhood was tumultuous. His mother was an addict addicted to amphetamines throughout much of his childhood. Robert has said, quote, "She used to sit downstairs all night in the living room raving at nobody in particular. She would just rave. I would periodically wake up and hear her down there raving." His father was a member of the United States Marine Corps from 1936 to 1956, about whom Robert has said, "He came from this real straight-back Puritan family with a Midwestern background. He used to come home from work, watch television, argue with my mother. Sometimes he would have two jobs, a lot of times to avoid coming home. Sometimes I wouldn't see him at all." Describing family life generally, Robert said, "Things were pretty miserable. I used to think I was the most miserable person on the face of the earth in my adolescence. It was grim, but we would always retreat into the wonderful, wacky world of comics." Robert's brother, Charles, was a year older and introduced Robert to comics. Together, they would find refuge in drawing their own comics. Robert, did you know that Elsie Segar drew you?
I never saw that before.
I found it in one of the Popeyes that we were reprinting, and I couldn't resist. This is a picture of Robert's-
There's my dad in the left-hand picture.
And can you make out the right-hand picture?
That's me and my brothers and sisters at Disneyland in 1955, after it just opened in Anaheim, California.
What was that like, going to Disneyland with your family?
It was the most exciting day of our life, going to Disneyland.
You had yet to become the hard-nosed cynic that-
Oh, yeah. Disneyland, we were completely in the thrall of Disney still at that age. My brother, Charles, just worshipped everything that Disney did. Walt Disney. Later, he hated Disney. But at that time, we were children. Disney was God, and Disneyland was heaven. There's some very early comics, early stuff.
Now, this is a drawing, Robert, you did of you and your brother, Charles, and your dad.
Yeah. My dad did not understand our interest in comics at all. And by the time we were adolescents, teenagers, he said, "Well, pretty soon you'll give up this whole comic book thing, and you'll get out and play football with the other guys" and stuff. And we never did. We just kept reading comics and drawing comics. We were what was what would be called later comic nerds, comic geeks.
The question I wanted to ask you is, can you talk a little about how your brother sort of initiated you into comics and what he did to inspire your interest in comics? You referred to him once as a self-motivated visionary.
He was completely, completely in his own world. You know, he was all about imagination, that's all. He just lived in his imagination. And he was very suggestible because he had this strong imagination. Like, we used to go to this amusement park, Riverview Beach, sometimes, and they had this scary house with a laughing, mechanical laughing lady, you know? And when he saw that, he would run screaming in the other direction. It terrified him so much, you know?
How old would you guys have been?
He was probably seven or eight, you know? I was five or six, seven. And I used to wonder at that, why is he... Just a mechanical thing, why? But for him, it became real, you know? He had this kind of imagination.
A vivid fantasy life.
Yeah. He was completely, that's what he lived in. He was, you know, he had a few screws loose. Don't we all?
But he was much more into comics than you were.
He was obsessed with comics and not interested in anything else. And when we were little kids, it was mainly Disney. Donald Duck and Mickey Mouse and all that stuff. And, you know, then Treasure Island and all that stuff. And I liked to draw, but I had a kind of broader interest in drawing than he did. I wasn't interested necessarily in drawing comics. But he was all about storytelling also, and I was not. But I had to do it, because if I didn't, I was nothing. I was a worthless piece of shit if I didn't draw comics. So, I had to do it. I had to turn out comics, you know? At least two a week or something.
Now, you were a worthless piece of shit in his eyes.
Yes, in his eyes. And he was very dominant over me. I was a passive little doofus when I was a kid, you know? Oblivious to the world.
You said he gave you a life.
That's right, he did, yeah. Gave me a life. Otherwise, I don't know what I'd be doing now. You know, working in the post office or something, and I don't know. He was so dominant. And then, the funny thing is, later, he gave up drawing comics. That's actually some of his work there. It's Charles' work.
We have it labeled over where you probably can't see it, but yeah.
When he was 18, 19, he lost interest in drawing completely and just turned into a writer. He kind of let the drawing part go, because storytelling became really his main thing. And he became a very good writer, actually.
How would you rank him as an artist? Wasn't he a pretty good artist?
Up to a point, you know? He was limited. He really learned the Disney technique, you know? The funny, humor Disney way of drawing. He could do that quite well, but it was limited. He couldn't, he wasn't interested in drawing other than just as an appendage to telling stories, which, you know, a lot of cartoonists are like that, you know? But I liked to draw. I liked to draw all kinds of stuff. And I liked making color pictures. He was not that interested in anything except producing comic stories.
Right, right. And I suppose for a cartoonist, the drawings are integral to telling the story as opposed to simply augmenting the story?
Integral. Well, some artists, some cartoonists, the drawing's really secondary, you know?
Such a-
So, a story is really the main thing. Well, you want me to name names?
Yes.
Art Spiegelman.
Okay.
A prime example. You know, his drawings, okay, it serves the purpose. You know, it merely serves the story, you know? It's not really very interesting in and of itself.
But it's primarily the story.
Right. And of course, the best cartoonists are the ones that are good at both. Carl Barks, who did Donald Duck, is a great artist and a great storyteller. That's very unusual, you know, to be able to do both. And I tend to think myself, I'm more of a drawer than a storyteller, actually. You know, pulling the stories out of me is hard, you know? So, that's why lately I tended to do more like kind of illustration work than actual story writing, like doing that Genesis. That was an illustration job, you know?
Right. This is an example of what you call the two-man strips by your brother and you. You collaborate on these.
That's Charles and me drawing together. We would pass it back and forth. I had my character, he had his character. And we would just do the dialogue as we went along, kind of make it up as we go along as an artist. It's kind of worked. It was a good exercise, anyway. And Charles was a real tyrant. If he didn't think my part was interesting, he would tell me, you know? Say, "Come on, make something more, move the story along. Come on, this isn't that interesting." You know, he was really a taskmaster. But I learned to be a cartoonist from him. And he quit, and I went on with it. And then I was like his student who became successful artist, and he was real proud of me as a student of his who had, you know, succeeded in the comics world.
This is simply a quote from you about the amount of work you put into learning how to draw when you were a teenager.
It's true. There was nothing else to do. I had nothing else to do. Otherwise, life was a vacuum when I wasn't drawing. I could watch television or read comics or, you know, jerk off or something, but basically, nothing going on.
You were socially, you were essentially socially alienated in school.
Yeah, yeah. It wasn't part of that at all. It's completely socially alienated. And people don't understand that, you know? How come you, boy, you spent all this time drawing when you were young? That's really amazing. How did you know to do that? You were so disciplined. But basically, I had no other life.
It was desperation.
Yeah, it was my way of living. I lived my life on paper by drawing.
Now, when you say you got really serious at the age of 16, how do you mean? I mean, how did you-
16, 17? Well, at that point, it stopped being a pretend thing, that I was just pretending to be a cartoonist. You know, like, I'm a kid, I'm just imitating, you know, Andy Panda. After that, I really started to see it as a serious vocation in life. And, you know, I became really obsessive about learning to draw well and be professional and tell a good story. And, you know, I really started to work at it with the future in mind, with this is gonna be how I'm gonna actually make it in this world, you know?
And you knew that at 16, 17?
Well, I just, there was no other choice. I had no other choice. I couldn't do anything else. I was completely inept in every other way. I could barely tie my shoes, you know? I could barely dress myself.
Well, thank God that's not true today.
Well, Aileen helps me dress myself.
Now, I wanted to talk to you a little about Harvey Kurtzman and his influence. We have a representation of Mad.
Aren't those beautiful? Look at those covers. Those are 1956 and 1957, Harvey Kurtzman's magazines.
You know the years.
When I first saw those, I was just struck dumb by how fabulous they were. And they're just so on the edge in the 1950s, you know? That stuff was completely, it was so far on the edge that they didn't sell well. You know, they sold very poorly and were a commercial failure. And I remember buying that one at the newsstand, and the old guy who ran the newsstand says, "Why do you buy that trash? Why do you like it?" And I said, "Well, I don't like it. I don't know." I didn't know what this is.
That would have been, you were 14 years old when you bought Humbug.
I think it's pretty good, what?
You were 14 years old when you picked up Humbug.
Yeah. It stood out like, you know, a diamond in the bleak cultural wasteland of the period.
Well, considering how well it was distributed, it's a miracle you found it.
Yeah, it was very hard to find, actually. After that one came out, I didn't see another one until three issues later. I thought, "Oh, I missed two issues, oh my God." So, that's when I actually started writing into the magazine and, you know, connected with them, actually. There's my comic strip I did dedicated to the memory of Harvey Kurtzman.
Now-
My hero.
I wanted to ask you how Harvey, well, I mean, Harvey affected you when you were a kid through Mad and Humbug, and then you actually met him.
Oh, yeah.
And he was, I think, as close as you came to having a mentor.
Yeah, he was. Yeah, he's the closest anyone came to being a hero for me from the older generation, you know? In my childhood and youth, I was surrounded by adults who were just dummies, you know? They just didn't have anything to teach me or tell me, you know, Kurtzman. Kurtzman's magazines probably taught me more about life than, you know, entire 12 years of school.
Now, can you tell me how you actually met Harvey Kurtzman?
Well, first, I sent him some early Fritz the Cat strips I had done to put in Help's Public Gallery, the section they had of where they took in contributions in the magazine. And he wrote back, and it was 1964, and he really liked them and said, "Send more." Oh my God, I couldn't believe it. A letter from Harvey, I still have that letter.
Really?
Yeah. Said, "Yeah, we liked the little cute cat cartoon. Well, you know, we might get in trouble if we run it, but do you have any more?" It was the one where he's, it's him and this girl cat come in out of the cold, and they start taking their clothes off. And it looks like he's gonna have sex with her, but then they're just laying on the floor and he's picking fleas off her. So, that was kind of the beginning of my relationship with Kurtzman. And then later, when Terry Gilliam was leaving as his assistant editor, Kurtzman just wrote to me and said, "Hey, you want to take his place? You want to replace Terry Gilliam and be my assistant editor at Help magazine?" And I said, "Yeah, you betcha." So, you know, that was an opportu-
And that turned out well.
Opportunity of a lifetime, yeah. It was really great. The day I got to New York, the magazine went out of business. I showed up at the office, and Kurtzman was leaning against the wall, and these guys were taking the desks and file cabinets out of the office. I said, "What's going on here?"
Story of your life.
He said, "The editor, the publisher's folded the magazine. It's over. Sorry. You know, I feel really bad. I, you know, got you to come to New York, and now you don't have a job." I said, "I'll help you get work." So, that's how I ended up working at Tops Bubble Gum Company.
Now, but before you actually moved to New York, you established a relationship with Kurtzman because he sent you on some assignments, like-
Yeah, I spent a couple of months in the summer of '64 working with Terry Gilliam on these Flumetti's and stuff like that, on some stuff for Help magazine. And then Kurtzman sent me up to Harlem to do that whole piece about Harlem.
This is a picture of Robert in Harlem in about 1964 or '63?
'64. In case you don't know, Harlem is a neighborhood, a section of New York City, which at that time was all black people and was a little bit dangerous to go into. Kurtzman, the editor of this magazine, sent me there to do a kind of cartoon journalistic piece about it.
And this is a, this is a drawing that Robert did of Harlem that appeared in Help?
Yeah. They show these gore movies, The Blood Feast, stuff like that. Do you ever see any of those gore movies?
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
They're all about people getting stabbed and blood all over the place. They're really horrible.
And then Harvey sent you to Bulgaria.
Yeah.
Tell us a little about that. You actually flew to Bulgaria?
Yeah, well, I got married in September '64, and we went to Europe. And I was living in Switzerland, and Kurtzman sent me a telegram, asked me if I wanted to go to do a journalistic piece in Bulgaria, which at that time was still, you know, in the Soviet Union. And you had to go through this elaborate visa process to get in there and everything. So, I said, "Yeah, I'll do that, yeah." I liked it there.
I was gonna say, was that a great adventure for you at the time, to go to an eastern block country and-
Oh, yeah, it was really incredible, really interesting. And I liked it so much, I told the woman at the embassy, and when we were leaving, that I liked the country. And she said, "You know, if you want to stay here, we'll really make it easy for you to stay. We'll get you a place." They were really anxious to have a defector from the United States, you know? Stay there.
Had you considered that?
Oh, yeah, I did, yeah. I liked it. It was really-
Seriously?
Interesting place, yeah. Yeah. People were real kind of, you know, relaxed and, you know, it wasn't, it didn't have the kind of hustle and bustle and bust your ass kind of attitude that you have in Western world, you know? It's different. But it's different. But people also complained about the repressive police-state atmosphere, so I don't know.
There is that, yeah.
Yeah. They all hated the Soviet Russians. They hated them.
I assume Dana would have put the kibosh on that idea.
She definitely did. She put the kibosh on that. It was, we had to go home, back to America. She wanted to go back to Cleveland and wanted me to go back to the greeting card company. Actually, eventually I did, actually. I couldn't take it in New York. It was too tough for me there. It was too competitive.
Well, after you, I mean, after you became unemployed instantly at Help, Harvey helped you to get freelance jobs at Tops.
Yeah, I worked at Tops. Busted my ass at Tops. It was hard work. They really pushed you and, oh, boy.
Did you actually work in the offices at Tops?
Yeah, I went in there every day for a while.
For how long?
Lexington Avenue subway there every day. For a couple of months in 1965. It was too much for me. I couldn't take it.
You weren't cut out for it.
Couldn't take New York. And they had this art staff there at Tops, so it was like about 12 permanent employees in the art department. And they were all deeply depressed, depressed Jews from Brooklyn, all of them.
And you saw the future.
And so I said, "No, I gotta get out of here." And then I started taking LSD at that time also. That didn't help. I couldn't really handle having a normal job when I started taking LSD.
Speaking of LSD-
That's what happened to me on LSD right there. I couldn't, I couldn't function anymore in the working world. Of course, at that time in the United States, we were lucky to grow up in that period in a way, because you could live really cheaply and fairly easily without having to worry about having a job or anything, you know? You could do it then. You could find an apartment on the Lower East Side of New York for $30 a month, and, you know, you could scrape that together somehow, you know? So, it was a great period to be kind of young and not interested in, you know, work and being part of the functioning society. It was a good time to be in that situation, taking LSD and being crazy and with the hippies and-
And that's pretty much impossible to do now in the States.
Well, it's harder to do now. It's harder. Also, the drugs are harder, you know? It's much more dangerous, you know?
Now, didn't you take LSD overseas the first time?
No. I took it in Cleveland in June of '65, first time. It was still legal then. You could still get it legally from psychiatrists. You know, psychiatrists were using LSD as a serious psychotherapy drug or experimental. But then '66, it was illegal, and then the quality of it all declined after that. The drug became highly questionable after that.
The quality of the LSD drug itself?
Yeah, yeah. Before that, you could, it was all made by Sandoz Pharmacy in Switzerland. But once it was illegal, then you had to get it from guys that had home laboratories, you know? Owsley and all these assholes.
Another argument to legalize drugs.
Well, I don't know. I don't know what I think about it now. I wouldn't recommend any 20-year-old to take LSD, you know? It's heavy shit.
Right, but it, but-
Is LSD available here in India? Whoa! Wow, okay. I kind of feel like I'm on LSD every day here anyway. Jesus.
Right. But it did, in a way, liberate your imagination.
It did, yeah. It was very liberating for artistic purposes. It was really a big boost to inspiration, you know?
So, if you had it to do over again, you would still take it, perhaps?
It's a rhetorical question, Gary. I don't know. Because, you know, it definitely had after-effects that lasted 20, 30 years, you know? I could, I'd wake up in the morning and this kaleidoscope of images, blablablabla, for 20 years. You know, I think that was from the defective drugs that I took, though, not from the Sandoz stuff.
It was the quality of the drug, not the drug purity.
I think so, yeah. They mixed it with all kinds of questionable materials.
Well, you certainly did a lot of strips and a lot of drawing.
That's completely LSD. That's an LSD trip, you know? I had really nightmarish, frightening, terrifying... Did you ever take LSD?
No.
No? You're better off.
I have time, I have time.
They're clapping over there for you. Good for you. Hey, here's a guy who never took LSD. Good for you, Gary. What a sensible guy.
You once advised me not to take it.
I did?
Yeah.
I don't think it would have, you know, helped you very much.
Probably wouldn't have improved the Comics Journal, although maybe it would have.
You know, I was kind of dependent on you as a steady, reliable businessman since you were my publisher.
Oh, brother.
So, I didn't want to destabilize your, you know, in any way, shape, or form, if I could help it.
Well, relying on me as a steady businessman, you might want to take more LSD.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Well, I think we can all be thankful you took it.
Yeah, I think.
Even though you might have had flashbacks 20 or 30 years later.
Well, it's just, it kind of makes it harder to cope with practical aspects of reality, you know? Like going to the store and buying groceries, or paying taxes, and, you know, dressing yourself, I don't know.
Another drug-fueled strip from Cavalier, 1967.
Yeah. Some people say this is the best stuff I ever did, this stuff. What do you think?
I mean, I think, well, no, I don't think it's the best stuff, but I think it's great work, and I think it seems like work you never could have done without it, so-
Without the drugs?
Yes.
Absolutely not. It's true.
Yeah, so-
But, you know, before I took LSD, I was developing as a storyteller. I started to make those long Fritz the Cat stories.
Yes, right.
After LSD, that was, I couldn't do it anymore. I couldn't keep a linear storyline going. I couldn't do it. So, it was all short stuff, you know, for a long time, you know?
Is that a result of the drugs?
Yes. I could not tell a linear story and keep the thread of the story going for a long period of time, you know? With LSD, it's all visionary. It's iconographic. Everything is iconographic. It's mystical. It's, you know, so you can't, you can't keep a linear thread going, you know? It just doesn't work, you know?
But you did do some very dense stories in the-
Dense?
Dense, I mean, graphically and narratively dense stories in the '70s, like the Bearsie Wearsies in Arcade.
It's not, it's narratively dense, but you'll notice it's kind of, kind of aimless. It's kind of meanders, you know? It's not really, it's not a very involved story.
Right, right. Whoops. Sorry about the technical inefficiency.
All LSD-inspired, all this stuff.
Was this also LSD-inspired, Mr. Natural?
Oh, yeah. Totally out of LSD. Actually, in early 19, late 1965, I took this drug. There was something wrong with it. And it made my mind kind of fuzzy, and it stayed that way for about six months, where I was so fuzzy that I was like having, being schizophrenic. My mind kept drifting to these visions. I couldn't help it. I couldn't stay focused on reality. I really couldn't. And that's when I had all my best ideas. All those characters, Mr. Natural and Angel Food McSpade and all, Flaky Foon, it all came out of that period. It ended the next time I took LSD, which cleared it up right away.
That's a secret, just take more LSD.
Well, there was something wrong with that drug. And I was so stupid when I was young that the guy that sold me the drug called me up later and said, "Did you take that drug yet?" And I said, "No." He said, "Don't take it. There's something wrong with it." And I took it anyway. That's dumb I was. And then when I went fuzzy, I thought, "Oh, shit, he was right. Oh, man, I really fucked up this time." Everything just went fuzzy.
Those are all such great enduring characters, though.
Yeah, it's funny, huh?
You use them as recently as 10 years ago, I guess.
That's right. Yeah, it's weird, isn't it, the way the mind works? Because my ego was completely, you know, shattered. It was gone for that six months. I was just like, kind of drooling. I was, you know, not, I was barely there. And I had, people took care of me. I was helpless.